Good evening and welcome to the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Valentine's Day Planning Board meeting. As we always do, can we first please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance, into the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Want to remind everybody, this sounds like it might be our last Zoom meeting for a bit. Hopefully, everything's beyond us or behind us. If you have any comments during the regular portion of the meeting with the public hearing, if you could please raise your hand or message Robin. We're going to keep the videos off and everything muted until it's necessary to speak. Okay, first we have correspondence. Anybody have anything they want to comment on?
Not here.
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I have one, one comment on page six in the third paragraph. The town attorney was talking about some issues and I think on the third line it references an environmental assessment form and I think he meant, I think what he said was the environmental impact statement at that point in the minutes.
Page six?
Page six, third paragraph, third line.
Okay. Anything else, Aaron?
No.
Anything on your end, John? Bill?
No.
Nothing here.
Okay, and I don't think Jim is with us yet, right?
He said he would be on a little late, remember?
Okay, if there's no concerns other than the one comment, do I have the motion to approve the meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move into the regular portion of our meeting. First, we have the Old Hill Farm Solar Farm. This is a public hearing. Location's East Main Street in Jefferson Valley. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Oner, you're on.
Well, good evening, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day. It's an interesting way to spend Valentine's Day, but we're looking forward to tonight's public hearing and we're pleased to be back in front of the planning board and the public to talk about our project, which is essentially to convert a former dairy farm, that was my grandfather's farm, also known as Hill Farm, into a twenty-first century community solar farm. We did a public information hearing back in December and we've done a number of things to respond to comments from the Tree Commission, the Town Engineer, the Planning Department, the Conservation Board. So, some of this presentation will be a little bit new, but some of it will be going over some old ground. So hopefully, if you have any questions, of course, we'd be happy to answer them. So I think it's very important, especially given what happened, I guess, last Friday, where the supervisor and several members of public were talking about the high cost of utility rates and especially in Con Ed, that this is a project that will provide approximately six hundred and thirty homes with renewable energy at a reduced cost. So as we're struggling with higher utility costs and limited alternatives to the closing of Indian Point, having a local distributed energy source in your community that both businesses and homeowners can take advantage of is very important. One of the most important things you can do about looking at a project is to look at the site itself. And we think this is a particularly good site for a community solar project. It's basically abandoned agricultural land with secondary growth and invasive trees, shrubs and vines. It's bordered primarily by commercial and industrial land, which is Club Fit, the Con Ed power lines, and by multifamily across the street on East Main Street and a single-family home to the west. There are, I'm going to pull up a presentation as we go so people can see what we're talking about. There are limited sightlines into the property and we are planning on planting two hundred and sixty-five new seven-to-twelve-foot evergreen trees to further screen sightlines into the property and we'll also have a seven-foot privacy fence. The solar arrays will be at least fifty feet from the property borders. And of the entire site, which is about nineteen acres, twenty-five percent of it will remain untouched. And that's basically the land on the eastern border. There's a wetlands there, we will not be in the wetlands, we will not be in the wetland buffer. And really, all that property you see behind the strip malls or strip retail on Hill Boulevard will remain untouched. So we have a five-acre buffer there as well. The site has received full approval from Con Ed. So, once we have approval from the town, we can begin to construct the project and provide renewable energy to local businesses and homes. One of the things that we've been highly focused on from the very beginning and we've made modifications throughout this process is the importance of screening. Screening the project not only from neighbors but from people driving by. So as I mentioned, there'll be five acres of the property which will not be touched. None of the healthy trees along the borders of the property will be touched or will be cut. And there are two contiguous parcels to this property, one along Route Six and the Con Ed property by the power lines, which will remain untouched as well and will act as a further buffer to the properties located to the east and south of our project. As I mentioned earlier, there's a fifty-foot setback from the panels to be fifty feet from the property lines. Basically, you'll have thirty feet from the property line to the seven-foot privacy fence. Most of the tree plantings will take place actually outside of the privacy fence. So first you'll have planted trees, then you'll have thirty feet to the privacy fence and another twenty feet to the solar modules. As I mentioned, we're going to plant two hundred and sixty-five seven-to-twelve-foot evergreens, about eighty-five of them along East Main Street, which will be interspersed with the existing trees, which will all be pruned to make sure that they maintain their health and also to make sure that the new trees will have sufficient light as to prosper. We're also going to plant approximately thirty-six along the western border with the single-family home on our western border. As I said, all of them will be evergreen trees, which should at full maturity be between sixty and eighty feet in height. As I, the other thing that's very important and I, we talked about this a little bit last time, is that underneath every part of the, underneath all the solar panels and throughout the fenced area of this project, we will be planting a pollinator-friendly seed mix. It will be maintained, it will be mowed periodically, but it will not be kind of a scorched earth appearance. It will be very grassy and actually pollinator-friendly. And along the eastern border of the property, which is abutting the wetlands, we are raising the fence up six inches so that animals that may have been traversing there can go through that part of the property as well. Like I said, we spent a lot of time on landscaping and tree mitigation and trying to, and responding to the recommendations of the Tree Commission. So, these are some snapshots and we obviously have larger pictures as well. But if you look, we have a close-up of the southern border of the property and just to orient you, the corner on the, the southern border is on the left side of the screen and in the corner there, you see there are double-row plantings of evergreen trees. The purpose of that is that is the corner that is closest to the intersection of Route Six and Hill Boulevard and that is intended to further screen the solar project from that, that corner. If you look below the blue shaded area, all of that is existing trees. It's approximately a hundred and eighty-nine to a hundred and thirteen feet from Route Six and that is already a treed area and all those trees will remain, nothing will be touching, nothing will be removed from that area, which will provide a significant buffer. That part of the property also has a pretty significant elevation gain of eleven to sixty feet, which means when you're on Route Six, you have to look up and you probably, you will not be able to see the solar panels given the elevation and the trees in between Route Six and that part of the property. On the northern border, which is along East Main Street, is where we're concentrating much of the planting to make sure that that area actually will look better than it looks today. We will repair the stone wall that's there, remove the dead trees and bushes, plant, I think it's eighty-five, evergreen trees, including some twelve-foot trees at the entrance to further screen the property. And further on, I have some renderings, which the planning board has seen before and I'm happy to share for those of us on the call who were not present at the information session. So, I think, well, the other issue that we've spent a fair amount of time on, as I mentioned, is what's going to grow there? And that is, these are some pictures, because I think many people have never really seen a solar, a ground-mounted solar installation. This is our pictures from a project that PowerFlex, which is the group we're working with, did in Half Moon, New York, which is near Saratoga Springs. And actually, they use sheep to graze and maintain the vegetation. So this is what a pollinator-friendly seed mix looks like when it's planted underneath and among solar panels. Another issue that we've spent a fair amount of time on concerns hydrology and water flow. We submitted an extensive stormwater pollution prevention plan friendly, also known as the SWIP, back in July and we have been responsive to quite recommendations and concerns from the Conservation Board and the Town Engineer. And as a result, we have added what's called level spreaders on about eighty percent of the property. When you look on this plan, you can see these squiggly lines that are intersecting the solar panels and those are the level spreaders. And what they do is they further mitigate any potential runoff from, that comes off the panels to make sure it's not concentrated and creates stormwater runoff problems. We've added about six thousand four hundred and ninety-five linear feet of those level spreaders at intervals across the site where the grade is greater than ten percent. As I said, it's about eighty percent of the project site. As I mentioned earlier, we're not going anywhere near the wetland or the hundred-foot wetland buffer intentionally. The other recommendation that we followed is to phase our construction in such a way that at no time is more than five acres of the property being disturbed. So it'll, the construction will be done in phases. So after each phase, it will be seeded and planted to prevent any potential impacts from runoff. So I mentioned earlier the site renderings. What we did was, and this is just to show you, we picked five locations along East Main Street and we did this back in late October, early November. And what we did was we took photographs of the particular locations and then we did renderings of what it would look like when we planted the seven-to-eight-foot trees. And frankly, when we looked at some of this, we decided to add twelve- and thirteen-foot trees because we felt that was better coverage. So, in this package of materials, you can see on the top graphic there, we have five sites. And below is an example of the, of a rendering of site number one in what we call year-one leaf-off condition. What that means is, this is what it would look like when we plant the evergreens basically on day one in the winter. And we've done that for each of the five locations here. So I'm going to just go through them one by one and you can see them. So on the left-hand side is the rendering, which would have the plantings of the evergreen trees. And while I will say the stone wall will not look pristine like that, because that would be kind of strange, we will fix the old stone wall to look like it used to look and clean up some of the debris that's around it. And on the right-hand side is the actual photograph taken back in November of that exact location, number one. Here you can see location number two, which is effectively in front of, I believe, Coach and Four. And then we have rendering number three, which will be at the entrance to the site. We've added a farm gate, that's the white gate you see in the front. In addition to, behind it will be the green privacy fence I was talking about earlier. And as you can see, we added some larger evergreen trees on either side of the entrance to further screen the view shed at that particular point in the, in the project. And that's it, site number three. This is site number four, as we're now moving closer toward Hill Boulevard. And yes, there's a stone wall in there. And now this is site five and this is almost at the intersection with Hill Boulevard, where we have a number, where the power lines are. The other thing that we have done since our last public information session was that we, working with the planning board, did what's something called site sections. And really, what a site section is meant to do is to envision if I were standing on the corner of, let's say, Hill Boulevard in East Main, looking up toward the property, what would I be able to see, given the topography and the location of trees and the location of the panels? And just so everyone understands, the panels are at their highest point approximately nine feet in height. So this is a depiction of the site. You can see there are a lot of lines intersecting it. And these were used, given to us by the planning department and these are the particular site sections that we have put together so people can get a sense, given topography and other surrounding buildings and trees, what it would look like if I was standing there and these things were built. So the site locations were at Old Jefferson Valley Road, basically the corner of Hill and East Main, also on the corner of Hill and Route Six from the Jefferson Valley Mall. And I think there's one more that it's hard for me to see. So I'm going to ask, I have on the phone Ben Reisman with me from PowerFlex and he's going to, this is not my area of expertise, so I'm going to let Ben sort of explain what everybody's looking at. But these were site sections that we provided to the planning department as well. Who wouldn't mind?
Sure. Excuse me, thanks Catherine. So, yeah, as Catherine said, on this first page, you can just see all of the sections that we're going to run through here. So these lines bisect the property and the views will just be following those, so we can kind of go through them. So this is location number one, which is, flip it back up to the top, this is this section here. I think you guys can see my mouse, so it's coming across East Main and looking back almost towards Club Fit.
So Ben, just put your pointer where you're standing, which is, I believe, on Old Jefferson Valley Road.
Correct, yep. So you can see here is an image of a car and then a pedestrian and two lines at, starting at eye level and then coming across the site. And almost think of this bottom image as a continuation of the top. So they, they really should be on one line here. The difference between the top and the bottom line is, the bottom line will intersect with the highest point of the panels and the bottom line is really at eye level. So you can see here, based on this image, there will be no sight of the panels between, you know, eye level here, you have the bushes that are really under the power lines, about two hundred and fifty-five feet plus or minus of trees. And then you cross East Main here, some additional trees, proposed evergreen double-row plantings that we've included in our site plan. We started, started the rows of modules here, continuing across modules. And as I said, this is the top line that intersects the highest possible elevation of modules. Behind that, proposed driveway, finishing with proposed evergreens and then the existing trees behind it. So that is the format of these site sections and I can go through one by one. If that would be helpful, we can maybe do it a little bit more quickly for the sake of time. But this is location two, kind of over by the bowling alley. Same idea here is, kind of the summary is, you're going to have to look through about two hundred and fifty-five feet of trees. Oh, this is, this is one again, actually, excuse me, this is two. So over by the bowling alley, you're going to have to look through again about two hundred and fifty-five feet of trees before you ever even hit the property. Location sightline three. And this is where Catherine is talking about the, one of the steep elevations. We are looking pretty much straight uphill here, proposed evergreens, and then you start to hit panels behind that. So again, there's really no possibility of seeing any, any modules. And up in the top-left corner, you can orient yourself. So this is looking from the, one of the strip malls. So you're looking across the power lines. Section four, this is, this area over here on the key map on the intersection of Route Six. Again, an area where we have severe slopes, about seventy-two feet of trees, existing trees, double row of proposed evergreens, and then you hit modules. So again, no direct sightlines here. This is sightline five for orientation. This is directly from Route Six, so looking right up, one of the hills that Catherine spoke about earlier on the southern border of the property. So the, the pedestrian here is standing in the parking lot of the mall, looking straight across Route Six, both lanes of Route Six, up a steep slope where the sightlines will bisect the slope and one hundred and fifty-five feet of existing trees and then the modules behind those.
Thanks, Ben. I think.
The, the last one Catherine is just.
Sorry, one more.
Yeah, there's just one more, it's, it's very similar. It's from the left, left-hand corner of the site, again on Route Six, but same idea. And that's, that's the six sightlines.
Thanks, Ben. So I, that's, that's the most recent thing we've done since the last time we were, before the planning board. And I just wanted to say a couple of things about the property. One of the reasons I think this is a really good project also is that, you know, it allows my family, which has owned this property for a hundred and eighty years, to maintain ownership of it. We will be leasing it to the owners of and operators of the solar system. We will have a lease-in place that requires them to take care of the property in terms of landscaping, snow removal, tree maintenance. And it does matter to us that this is a well-maintained, you know, attractive piece of land, that we're not creating an eyesore, that's very important to my family. So with that, I'm happy to respond and Ben is also happy to respond to any of the questions that the public may have or any of the planning board members may have.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. First to the board, anybody have any comments?
No.
Questions? All right, I do have an email that I was asked to read from Dan Strauss. And it reads, "I find it unconscionable that the town of Yorktown, a tree city for ten years, will allow thousands of trees to be cut down to benefit landowners who want to install in-ground solar farms in residential neighborhoods. All this has become, all this has become is a toss-up between housing and solid farms and the trees and the environment be damned. I don't believe for one minute that more trees will come down for residential development and Yorktown needs more new single-family homes and townhouses so more people with some money can move here. You can put tons of solar on parking lots, canopies, rooftops and commercial zones. You can't do the same with homes. You say you can't, you can only follow the law, you say you want to get it right. I say you can stop this attack on the very fabric of Yorktown if you want it and get it right, Dan." Anybody else from the public have any concerns, questions they would like to raise? Just again, raise your hand?
First, I have Sarah Wilson.
Hi, members of the planning board, thank you, Robin. As an environmentalist and in Yorktown, you know, I understand the, the balance between wanting to bring in renewable energy but also preserving trees. And, you know, as the solar law was being drafted, you know, we were trying to put a hierarchy in place that would ideally prefer already-cleared land, would be the first, you know, first property that would be desirable and then looking at, you know, things like farmland, brownfields, et cetera, and, and only wooded parcels kind of at the very last, the bottom of the list. And I, I think this being a former farm, it does lend itself well to, you know, to a solar farm use. It's, while it is a treed property, it's, it's not wooded to the extent that something like, you know, the Putnam Valley property, you know, is, is wooded, where you're looking at almost two thousand trees coming down. I think the count here is, is something around five hundred trees. And, and mitigation will be done. So, you know, I personally feel that it's less of an impact to the neighborhood and to the environment, putting a passive use such as solar panels rather than building, you know, clustered housing, as has been proposed on this property in the past. And, you know, it seems to have been done in a thoughtful manner, from what I've seen, the changes that have been made to the, the plan over these months. And so I'm, I'm supportive of the, the plan.
Thank you.
Susan Segal? Thank you, can you, can you hear me? Yes. Yeah. I, I wasn't planning to, to speak at the hearing tonight. I think at earlier, at the informational hearing, I, I made some general comments about appropriateness of the site for solar farm. But I would like to comment on the very first comment that I heard about how this is going to help reduce our electric bills. And I know lots of people, you know, have commented on the sudden increase and dramatic increase we've gotten in, in our utility bills, me included. If I was concerned, this project will have absolutely no impact on anyone's utility bill, electric bill in Yorktown Heights. If I wanted to, to reduce my electric bill today, I could sign up for any number of community solar projects and they don't even have to be in Westchester County. I believe the town government, our town government participates in community solar projects in upstate New York. Okay? And I see Paul Moskowitz's photo here and I know he participates in, in a solar project and I'm not sure, you know, there probably are many other residents who are saving money on the electric bill because they participate in community solar projects. But when somebody has come, and this has been said in several of the other solar projects that have come up, and I think I made this point once, and I'm asking somebody on the board to please clarify this so the public is, clarifies this misunderstanding. When, when the town of Yorktown approves a solar farm project, it has absolutely nothing to do with their getting reduced electricity rates, okay? Or the availability of electricity. If they want to do that, they can go to website. Paul, if you're going to come on later, you can give the name of the website. I, I, I don't know what it is, that they can reduce their rates. So would you please clarify this? There are many benefits to solar farms, I'm not denying that, but it will not reduce our, the individual electric rates for Yorktown residents, thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Robin? Let's see.
Patricia Sheehy?
Oh.
I'll get to Paul. Sorry, I have a list.
Hello. Is it my turn?
No, not yet. Mrs. Sheehy, are you there?
Patricia.
I am, yes, I'm, hi, thank you.
How are you?
Thank you, good, thank you for taking my questions. One major question we have here is about the runoff. We did speak to the town engineer and because we noticed on the plans, something that was concerning. The runoff seems to be, actually, and the town engineer agreed, that it's, it's coming towards our property. I know that eighty percent have those, those spreaders for eighty percent, but are we in the twenty percent that's not covered? He was, the town engineer was quite concerned. Um, he was, the town engineer was quite concerned and said that would have to be changed. The runoff could not be directed towards our property, which it is right now. Um, another question I did have, we did see the line of sight for lots of places where people don't live. But we live right here and, and that's going to be right, our, our next door neighbor. Um, we'd like to know what our line of sight will be. I know they're going to be, um, Catherine was kind enough to send me an email about the trees. Um, there will be two rows of trees and they're not cutting down trees that do exist there. Um, but fifty feet. Is still quite close to where we live. I mean, that, our doorway is right, is facing right, um, on the, the rock wall. That's where we take our dogs out. For play several times a day. We have two border collars and, border collars, he needs lots of exercise. So it's several time a day thing. Um. We're concerned about the noise and how long the construction will be. Because we're not going to be able to stay here if that, if, if there's a lot of noise, um, construction, our dogs won't be able to take it, neither can we. I won't be able to do my job with that because of the noise level. Um, so we're concerned about that and maybe there can be some noise abatement. These are just thoughts and concerns we have. Um. The other problem, the other concern we had is the privacy fence. What exactly, it didn't look very attractive in the picture. Um, I know there's going to be a chain link fence, but there's also going to be a privacy fence. Is it possible that. For our property, the privacy fence looks a little bit more like a fence someone might have for their property, um, rather than an, an industrial sort of fence. I, I know that, uh, I mean, we, we are certainly in support of solar energy in this family, but we do have to live here. Um, we, um. We've spoken to real estate lawyers. I have them in my family. We've spoken to many people to get a consensus about how this will impact. Our property. We know that the general consensus is that it doesn't, but there have been studies done. And there was a, a study done through State University about how it does impact property values. Um. We're a little concerned about that. If, if it can be made to be attractive, then possibly it won't impact our property values. And that, that is a concern. I mean, this is what we have for our daughter. That's what we're leaving her. I'm sure Catherine understands that issue herself. Um, so we would like to make sure that it's, it's attractive. We do have in the back of our property, um, when the construction was done there. So we are there a construction issue. So we're, we're, we know about construction. Um. The trees there were not maintained. Um, nor, nor was the fence. And it's, it's, we've had a lot of damage on our property from trees falling. So I am glad to hear that, that will be, um. Watched over in a sense. I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm still kind of a little bit concerned about that and if there's kind of a, a bond that might be able to be, um, proposed. Whether the, the state government could possibly step in if there's damage. We have had a lot of damage on our property from the back. I'm not saying that will happen with the solar farm. It's just something we need to be thinking about. Um. The, uh, is, I'm also wondering if there is a sort of a construction timeline. So we can be prepared for that. Um. Is anything else, Molly, that you wanted to say?
No, it's all pretty.
I think that was, I think that's what we were most concerned about. Um. Yeah, that really, I have my list here and I think I did address our, our biggest concerns.
Thank you very much for your time and your questions.
Thank you.
Uh, Bill Beck.
Hello, all. How are you tonight? Uh, we are six hundred Bank Road, a, um, we.
The person who just spoke before.
Oh, before us.
Ms. Sheehy, what was your address?
Six fifteen East Main Street. We are the one house that's directly next to it.
The only residential area right adjacent to the property.
Thank you.
All right. Well, hello, everybody. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk here. Um, I have gone through this project fairly, um. Closely with Catherine. Uh, she's been a great neighbor for forty years. Um, uh, helped us through some projects as we've done them and, and we have every intention of supporting this project. Uh, it seems like a great use of the property. The only better use I can think of is probably two thousand luxury homes. That could, uh, feed our club with people. Uh, but in absence of, uh, living in utopia, we'll, uh, we'll live with a solar project. I think it's a great idea. I think the town, uh, 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 has. Uh, definitely, uh, and gets a benefit from that kind of a project. My, my only worries are two, and I've already shared them with, uh, Catherine. Uh, we share, um, an area that she wants to cut some trees, uh, and then replace those trees with new trees. Uh, along where we have a bubble that stands, uh, during the winter season. Um, uh, in the current drawing, these trees that go back up grow to forty or sixty feet. Uh, and you guys can probably understand, uh, we don't really want really tall trees around our bubble. When trees fall onto bubbles, they knock them down and that's usually not such a great thing. So if there were a way. Uh, to do something that's lower to the ground, shrubbery of some kind, something that doesn't get higher than six, eight, ten feet. Uh, you know, even ten feet's probably tall for us. Uh, we'd, uh, we'd like that more. Uh, and I think it would actually provide better cover for, uh, the tennis use that happens really in the summer for us. Uh, the only time it's going to matter to us at all what's over there is in summer when people are playing tennis. Um. But the current screening as, as done without the tree lot, without the trees at all, uh, is plenty for us. We have a windscreen up, so you're gonna look through a windscreen. Up a small hill to their screening to the solar panels. So, uh, I, I am in favor of putting something in between, but probably something fairly short. Uh, arborvitae, something that doesn't grow real, real tall. Um, and the only other area we really talked about as far as a concern for Club Fit is in the back of our building. Um, there's a big hill that goes up from us to the farm property. Uh, there are trees up there. Some of those are slated to come down. I'm sure some of them are dead. Um, we have not had a chance to go up and, you know, take a quick per, personal look at it. Uh, but, um, a- as long as the trees that we're feeling are in danger of falling down the hill into our, uh, pool deck. Uh, are being removed, it's, it's all a, a home run as far as we're concerned. Um, and any replacements we do that help shade things, uh, is only considered good. So, um. So I guess really I just have those couple little concerns, but in general, uh, at least this neighbor is very much in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Paul Moskowitz.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that I do subscribe to a community solar project. It's the Arcadia Farm, solar farm. And there are two benefits that I can think of. If anybody wants to subscribe to community solar, they can do this on the Sustainable Westchester website. And you get a discount in the cost of electricity and you support solar energy. So I recommend that. In terms of this particular. Uh, development using solar, there is a fundamental question that I can see. And that is, do we really want to open up all of our residential areas to what is in effect? An industrial project? That is, these are not strictly commercial in, in the sense of the word. It's an industrial manufacturing, in which case they manufacture electricity. If we allow this to continue, and that's what the law does. We will see Yorktown's residential areas hollowed out like Swiss cheese for solar installations. This may have some unintended consequences. Of course, it will have unintended consequences. I can think of a couple of things. If it's more profitable to take your land, which has not been developed and install solar, uh, farms. Then we will see diminishing areas of, um. Residential property. My, my Swiss cheese effect. There are also some unintended consequences. I've read one research paper where they measured temperatures. Next to a solar farm. The solar panels in the summertime operate at about a hundred sixty-five degrees F. That's about the same temperature as the coffee that you get from McDonald's. So it's hot. And the result is that nearby, there are increases in temperatures. Now, we don't know how this will work out in the case of Yorktown or nearby residences. But, uh, we'll see. It's an interesting experiment. And I'm sure that, uh. Patricia will report to us on how that goes. There may be other things that happen. I just think that it's not wise. To. Allow our residential areas to be de facto rezoned for, for industrial developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz. Anybody else, Robin?
That's everyone on my list. Catherine has her hand up. She's the applicant. Uh, I just wanted to know if it would be appropriate. There are certain of those questions I could probably answer right now, and if that's appropriate, I don't want to take everyone's time, but. I'm happy to run through it. Um.
By all means.
Um, I, I, um. Uh, I've, I've emailed with, um, Mrs. Sheehy and I'm happy, we're gonna try to schedule time to go through all of her issues. But I think, um, the important one about noise. Um, people said invert, you know, it really depends on what type of inverter you're using. Now. I'm a little bit above my pay grade here, but I've looked into what the pit, the particular inverter is and what the decibel level of the inverter is. And basically the inverters are located at the end of the rows of the solar panels. And it, when you're standing three and a half feet away from them, they make about as much noise as a refrigerator. About sixty-five decibels. So if you're fifty feet away from an inverter making sixty-five decibels, I, there will be no noise impact. And obviously we can think about where they're located so that they're not located near Mrs. Sheehy. But they, even if they were near there, there's a fifty-foot buffer to the property line. And there's also, um, and we measured it because I was concerned about this, um. It's ninety-five feet from Mrs. Sheehy's, the corner of her house to the solar panels. From her actual house. I'm not saying her entire property, but from her house. Um. So I just want to answer that question. As for, um, construction. I mean, you, like us, live through the construction of the bubble. And Club Fit, and then there's Toys R Us and, you know, on and on and on. Um, this is a rel- compared to other projects, this is a relatively short timeframe and it's a couple of months of, of. You know, what they call civil work, which is taking down trees and moving some rocks. And then delivering of the equipment and then erecting them kind of like an erector set on the property and then planting. And it will be done, as I said, in phases. So it might take a little longer, but that's because you're doing five acres at a time. Building what you need to build, planting it, and then moving to the next five acres. And so the five acres near you. I don't know when it will be scheduled, but. That'll be done and then it'll be moving down, moving on down the property line. So I think all told, the estimate I was given was six to seven months altogether. Um, but it's not six to seven months of constant banging like you're building buildings. It's, you know, the civic work, taking down the trees and moving some stone walls, and then it's like an erector set. And the delivery, obviously, the materials. Um, your question about the privacy fence, um, it's a very good question. The privacy fence is basically a chain link fence. With like green woven through it, so it looks green and not like you're looking at chain link. Weather, and that's in part required by the code, that it has to be seven feet high and it has to be. Protecting the solar panels from people going on to the property. Um, and messing with them. Uh, there will be several lock boxes on the property as per the fire inspector so that they can access the panels at any time if they need to. We've met with him and. Answered all of his, um, questions and responded to his requests. Um, whether or not you could put a different kind of fence there, I don't know the answer to that, but we can definitely look into that and find that out. Um, as for the question about erosion, and I did ask the engineers who did our, our SWIP report. Actually, your property is at a two-foot elevation from our fi- our property and the water actually would run from your property to ours, and there's actually a depression. On the other side of the stone wall from you. So I don't, I don't know what the town engineer said to you, but based on what we were looking at earlier today. Um, I think the water actually runs from your property to ours and not the other direction. And so I don't think that this project will incur any other, um, any erosion issues for you. And of course, when during construction, there'll be silt fences and other. Measures used to prevent, um, sedimentation from going where it shouldn't go. Uh. The other, um, and as far, so I think those are most of your questions, but you and I can talk about that when it's convenient for you and, uh, but those are the big ones. I think it's important to state that, and that. Um, I, I heard what Paul Moskowitz said, but to be, to be clear. This property is currently surrounded on three sides by industrial uses and commercial uses. So we have the Con Ed power lines on the entire eastern border. And on the other side of that is the back end of all the, um, commercial and retail operations along Hill Boulevard. On the entire southern border, it's either Route six. Or Club Fit, which as you heard from Mr. Beck, includes a tennis bubble and a giant. Building where there's a pool inside. And the only. The only residential property, and I'm not picking on Mrs. Sheehy, is next door Mrs. Sheehy and Cochon Four across the street. Um, so this, I, I do not, I do not view this as a quote, technically a residential area when. Most of the bor- borders that my family has are industrial and commercial operations. And yes, it's zoned R one twenty and has been for quite some time, but this property has a long history of being up for. Discussion for many different types of uses, given that their uses around it are quite varied. Um, the last thing I just want to say, so everyone understands, I don't know if I said it up top, is. Um, I, we will be, yes, we will taking down trees, we'll be taking down five hundred something trees of which. A hundred and something are either poor condition or invasive. And we will be planting, so at the end of the day, it's three hundred and sixty-three trees that are. Technically protected under the tree code and we will be planting two hundred and sixty-five new trees. So, um, not, not just, and if Mr. Beck prefers bushes, I'm happy to talk about what kind you, you'd prefer. I understand. We need to take those trees down back there so that they don't fall on your bubble or the solar panels. So that's part of the reason we're taking those trees down because they are in some ways, while they're alive, hazardous. So, um, I just wanted to see if I could respond to some of those questions. Um, and if there are any others, I'm happy to do so either at this meeting or offline. And Robin and John know where to find me.
Thank you very much.
Oh, can I just say one more thing, um, in terms of timing? Uh. Is this, is this, will the public hearing be closed at the end of tonight? Is that the way that this will work for us?
Well, we'll talk about that with the board after all the comments.
Okay, great.
Process.
Thank you.
No problem. Anybody else, Robin?
No.
I know we have members from the conservation board. Um, anybody from that board care to comment?
This is, uh, Diane. Um. For this project, I think we, we sent you many memos on it and. We were kind of. In agreement with the fact that. This probably could happen here at this site, but please review our memos. Completely.
No problem. All right, so it sounds like. We've gone to the public. Any other comments from members of the board?
Um, I was just. Sensitive to, um, Mr. Beck's comments about the, uh. Processively modifying the landscaping plan around their property to assess, you know, to accommodate his. Request. I think that's, uh, something that you should look into. I don't think it's a major. Something bought by any means and we should move forward and just keep that in mind. That, uh, makes sense what he said.
Yeah, I, I think that really is a great point. Um. And, you know. Clearly should be looked at. Uh, Ms. Hone, you, I, if we could talk about the streetscape though. You said you increased. You went back and looked at the size of the trees and you increased it. And you also looked at it, the viewscape with a leaf-off condition and you, you. You brought the trees from, I think you said, ten to fourteen. Is that correct?
No, what we, we brought them, most of the trees are in the seven to eight foot range when planted. At the entry point, at the entrance to the site, we added some twelve-foot trees because it seemed when you were. Putting in the gate that it would be better screening if we added them there. And we also added some twelve-foot trees on the border with Mrs. Sheehy. Um, to improve the coverage on that side. We added more trees on that side and, and added the twelve-foot trees on that side too.
Thank you. And I, I, I see Dan C R C is on. Dan, do you want to talk about the stormwater?
We took a look at the stormwater. They, they addressed our, our main concern. Um, with the addition of the level spreaders to, to ensure they were complying with the, uh, the D E C. with the addition of the level spreaders to, to ensure they were complying with the D E C memorandum. I did speak to the residential owner next door, and look, there might be some opportunity to extend one of the level spreaders, but we'll, we'll have that discussion with the applicant as we do a, a deep dive into their stormwater report. But generally speaking, they've complied with my concerns, and now it's time to, you know, once whatever changes now with landscaping or whatever, but it would appear that we're getting pretty close to the end here, and we'll make sure that none of the neighbors are impacted by any increase in stormwater runoff.
Thanks, Dan. Jim, anything on your end?
Nope, nothing on my end.
Okay. John Tiger?
Just a word about the sightline sections and the screening. We'll be looking at that with Catherine's team in detail. I think they provide very good information as to how to effectively screen the property in the areas that needs to be screened. So we'll be talking with them about species, rates of growth, and we'll be able to tell in particular areas what the heights that are actually needed are to effectively screen it, so we'll be talking about those things.
Thank you. And Ms. Honig, just one other question I had. When, when was the, the property, when did they cease the farming operations?
Well, my grandfather died in nineteen eighty-seven, and I think that's when the last cows left. He wasn't a dairy farmer in his eighties, but he, he did keep cows there.
Okay.
And grow vegetables.
Okay, thank you. The, the board did conduct a sidewalk, an extensive sidewalk. And we did look down at the Club Fit property. There is quite an elevation change. And again, with the stormwater questions that came up, obviously, Dan C.R.C. will be, as he said, digging into that. All right. Any last comments, concerns? All right, then. I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing and leave the comment open for a ten-day period. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion to, oh, he did this. All right, I think we're good. We missing anything, Robin? John?
No, I think you have it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Presentation, well done.
Thank you. And we'll be in touch on next steps with John and the planning board and the possibility of a neck deck.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Wells Fargo lighting plan. This is a decision statement. Location is nineteen thirty-seven Commerce Street, Yorktown Heights. Through the applicant.
Hi, my name is Natalie Sell, and I'll be going through. Okay. So for the Wells Fargo, they're needing to update their lighting. There's a existing pole closer to Commerce Street, and we're going to replace that. And I'll show you what the new one will look like. Like this, it's, oops. It is the decorative. It is going to be a little higher than the existing. We're going to have it at twenty foot above grade for this new one right here. So it's this one right here, closer to Commerce Street. And then we are replacing some of the, the lighting. We're just matching existing on these areas right here, just replacing like for like. Now there is a new pole, a brand new pole going right here closer to the pub, and I'll show you what that's going to look like. Let me get my other drawings here. This is the, the new pole. So we did receive architectural board approval, I want to say last month, or maybe the month before that, so we're just trying to see if we could get planning approval. Now, I know, I know we went back and forth, or the engineer went back and forth for quite a while on this, but that is basically what we're doing. And I apologize, I'm not a lighting expert, so nobody was available today, so I was like, yeah, I could do it.
And if I could ask, again, the, the, the lights are proposed?
Why are we updating our lighting?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so Wells Fargo has their own security purposes, and also it's a federal mandate that was supposed to be done in twenty twenty, so we're, we're a little bit behind trying to get all of these caught up. The legal mandate.
So this is throughout the banking system where you have ATMs?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Rich?
Yep.
You guys had reviewed this site a couple times. The planning department kept reviewing it with the applicant because we continue to want the lighting levels lowered. To still comply with the law but be lower. I'm just concerned that any new poles should be the sixteen feet tall, not twenty.
All right, is, is that achievable?
Let me go back to the engineer. I feel like that was an issue. So I know this one right here is the six, it's sixteen above grade, but this new one in front is the twenty. So let, let me go back and ask if we can, we could get that lowered at all.
Okay, if you could find that out. I think until, until we find that out, we'll hold off on any actions, Robin.
Okay.
All right, any issues from the board? All right, so Ms. Sell, you get to the engineer and get back to the planning department. If you could reach out to Robin.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You too. You too. Thank you. Bye-bye.
You're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Nantucket Sound Sons. This is a decision statement. Three eighty-five Pier Street. Do we have Joe Rena on?
I believe he had to jump to another meeting quickly. Let me just stop the screenshot. Yeah, I don't think he came back in. This, we could wait, or, you know, this is the Nantucket project that was approved. The resolution required they come back for the stormwater and tree permit after they got the D E P approval, which they did receive.
Okay, I know we got, we have Dan on. Dan, if you could, any issues?
I provided staff with a draft, what we call Page Four, for the actual permit.
Oh, here's Joe.
Essentially has our basic conditions in there. So if you, do you want to run through them?
Yeah, if you could.
Joe Rena is just joining us.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I was disconnected and had to find my way back.
No, that's the wrong Joe. That's right.
Okay, then. I withdraw the apology.
We're looking for Joe Rena.
I'm here.
Joe, what are you pulling, double duty?
Yeah, Armonk and Yorktown.
Oh, boy.
It's gonna get tougher when Zoom is over.
Yeah, that's gonna be really hard. I can't run that fast. Anyway, hello, everybody.
How are you?
Okay.
What do we got?
So we're before you to get approval for the MS four permit, the stormwater permit for Nantucket. That was not originally part of the approval of the resolution. And I, I don't remember why, but my guess is because we didn't have D E P approval in place, maybe that was the purpose. That was not complete at that point, but at this point, we have D E P approval. And we're, we're all set on this project to, to move ahead and get final site plans signed, so.
Okay, and I know Dan had some comments he was going to go over. But question, Joe.
Run, run through them quickly.
Sorry, John.
On the permit. So this is prior to the commencement of work. Two thousand dollar erosion control bond, getting the building permit, SWIP approval from the D E P, and we're going to have to do our own notice of intent and SWIP acceptance form from us. Eight percent engineering fee, which I'll, I guess, reach out to you, Joe, and see if you have a construction estimate.
We're working on it now.
Okay. Basically following the erosion control details, having a pre-construction meeting, and coming up with a maintenance agreement during construction, basically to, you know, follow the approved plans, allow us for inspections. Again, following the, the D E C guidelines. And then finally, when everything's done, submitting the construction completion certificate, stabilizing the area for final, for final release of the erosion bond, as-built survey. And then just reiterating that prior to C.O., that all the conditions of this permit must be met. So that's basically what's out there for your signature, Rich.
Thank you very much, Dan. John, I'm sorry we cut you off. You had something?
No, no, that's okay. I was kind of interjecting. Just a quick question for Joe Rena. So tree mitigation-wise, we are following what we had discussed?
That's right.
And it worked out the last time with some work up on the trailway and things of that nature, right?
Yeah, there was some work on the, heading the trailway at Walden Road. So, you know, that's, that's, that's basically what we agreed on that last plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim, anything on your end?
Nothing on my end.
Any comments, concerns from the board members?
None here.
No reason we can't proceed, right?
We should proceed.
Okay.
All right, so we, we have a resolution for our approval. It reads, "Resolution approving stormwater pollution prevention permit, tree permit for Nantucket Sounds LLC." Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Goodnight, Joe.
Goodnight.
Take care. Good luck in North Castle.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion to close the regular portion of the meeting and move into the work session.
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor. Aye. Thank you very much. We're now in the work session. First on the agenda, we have Foothill Street Solar. This is a discussion of site plan and special permit. It's on Foothill Street. We did ask, and I see members of the conservation board with us, as the environmentalist end of this project has become, you know, a back and forth with the approval. So I thank you all for joining us. Diane, do you want to start off?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. You did ask us to address the environmental impacts of the Foothill Street solar project and to review the Barton and Lo Judas report. Our memos from August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and September first, two thousand twenty-one laid out our concerns that there are significant adverse environmental impacts which still have not been fully addressed by the applicant or by the B and L report. Although, although it is clear that solar is an important energy source, the particular location of this project is not the best when other more suitable sites exist in the town for this type of development, several which have already been approved and we just talked about. We have repeatedly stressed that large-scale solar installations should be sited in appropriate places as recommended by many publications. Places such as already disturbed sites, abandoned farm fields, rooftops, and parking lots. You kind of heard that before from some other people. This project will clear-cut an established forest area to install the field of panels. Many sites can be developed if adequate mitigation, mitigation is approved to minimize adverse environmental impacts. Yorktown's wetlands and tree ordinance are permissive. They allow for development. But it is up to the town planning board to determine if the mitigation is adequate. The proposed mitigation plans meet some of the requirements, but do not mitigate all the adverse impacts, nor does it meet the needs of our suburban town. Solar fields do offset carbon in the atmosphere more than the forest, but a forest provides more benefits than the solar fields. Forests, they filter and recharge our drinking water, they clean the air, they stabilize the soil from erosion, they help to moderate the temperature, provide habitats. Forest is greater than the sum of the parts. It is the soil, the leaf litter, the roots, the herbaceous layer, the understory, the canopy. The loss of each tree can be mitigated by plantings or payment to the tree, tree fund, but the adverse impacts that result in the loss of a forest function is much greater. The documents submitted to us do not successfully mitigate for the loss of the trees and the forest function. Instead, the applicant claims that contributing a significant fund to the tree fund is sufficient enough. Although the applicant did show us how housing development would disturb the site, sound housing development would not eliminate the benefits of the forest, but the clear cutting of a solar field will. Suburban developments provide a variety of landscapes while solar fields are limited. The environmental report prepared by B and L follows the secret handbook. Each town must review the secret documents in relation to the size and character of its town. One example is a statement in the report that no core forest is present at the site. The definition of a core forest implies a large parcel. Suburban towns don't have large parcels, and every forested area is precious. The Meagan Outlet crosses the property in a cool ravine with eastern hemlocks on the steep banks. Environmentalists have determined that cool forests can support unique species, and large buffers are needed to protect them. The adverse effects to the stream has not been addressed by the applicant or the B and L report. What will the impact of the runoff from a grassy habitat have on the stream? Will a hundred-foot buffer be adequate to shield the riparian corridor from the heat island effects of the solar installation? The B and L reports assume no other portion of the property will be developed. The board is concerned about adverse effects on the Meagan Outlet if the sixteen remaining acres to the southwest of the outlet are developed without a conservation easement. The B and L conclusions do not address the possibility of this development. The trees, the town's tree and wetland preservation ordinance shows the town's commitment to preserving trees and the forest for the valuable function they perform. It is your responsibility to determine whether contribution to the tree fund would be equal to losing acres of forest habitat, especially when there are other opportunities for this type of development in this town. The planning board needs to set an example and analyze the environmental loss beyond the ordinances for the benefit of the whole community and for the future. And the conservation board is not in favor of this project at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anybody else from the conservation board want to speak? I think that kind of spoke for everybody.
We did collectively write this memo here for you. We would be more than happy to issue it as a formal document as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we appreciate your time coming out tonight. Mr. Shanahan, you wanna speak to that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to bring the board comment on what's transpired with the project in the town since our last meeting was adjourned on January twenty-fourth, I believe it was. At that time, the board may recall that your attorney had raised a question with regard to the appropriateness, if you will, of our request that our payment into the Tree Bank Fund be offset by the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we were paying to do additional plantings at the site. Particularly Jim at that point questioned if some of the screening for the project was included in those plantings, whether they truly qualified as replacement for the protected trees being removed. Without choosing to fight that fight, if you will, we will concede Jim's point. Accordingly, back on the first of the month, we submitted a memo to the board revising our mitigation plan to fully comply with the requirements of section two seventy without any offset requested. Specifically, that section provides that in lieu of replacing a lost protected tree, a disturbance of a protected woodland, the payment shall be one hundred dollars for every protected tree removed and three hundred dollars for every five thousand square feet of protected woodland disturbed. Our new mitigation plan, which again has been submitted to the board, calls for total payment into the Tree Bank Fund of two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That is calculated strictly by the terms of your code. And that is, we have sixteen hundred and fifty-eight trees to be removed and a hundred dollars or a hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And we are disturbing fifteen point nine acres of the thirty-four point twenty-three acre site at three hundred dollars for every five thousand square feet for an additional forty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. So our total mitigation plan under section two seventy and in accordance with section two seventy is two hundred and seven dollars, three hundred and fifty-six cents. As a result of this revised mitigation plan, the town's Preconservation Advisory Commission issued a memo to the planning board back on the third of February reporting that, and I quote, "All of the TCAC's concerns have been addressed. We have no objection for this project moving forward in the planning board process." Close quote. I also appeared before the Conservation Board on the second of February. The board expressed, as they have for the last three years, a number of points. One of the main points that was broached and was brought forth by Diane again in her presentation this evening, but she did not put forth the fact that the matter had been addressed. Ms. Bach, the co-chair of the board at that time, expressed the concern that if, after the project was built on the approximately fifteen acre project site, what assurances do we have that the remaining nineteen acres won't be developed for another solar project or a residential subdivision has been previously discussed? I told that the board at that time that if this solar project goes forward, Bill Lockwood will enter upon a conservation restriction committing, a conservation restriction committing that the nineteen acres will not be developed and will be left undisturbed for the life of the solar project, which, which is a twenty-five-year lease with two five-year extensions. So we're looking at a conservation restriction of twenty-five years plus five, plus five at a minimum. So with all due respect to the Conservation Board, after hearing that presentation on the second and receiving a memo from me two days later committing to that conservation restriction, I think it's very unfair to go public this evening and say they don't know what would happen or how we're going to address that matter when it was addressed at their meeting and confirmed in a memo to both the Conservation Board and the Planning Board. The truth of the matter is, this is a matter of anti-development. This isn't a matter of conservation. We've got a thirty-four-plus acre site that the Lockwoods have owned for two hundred years. We're proposing to put a conservation restriction on over half of it, nineteen acres, assuring that it's conserved and preserved for twenty-five-plus years. That apparently isn't good enough for the Conservation Board. They don't want the site to be developed at all. And that is not their role, with all due respect. We are not, and I'm quoting Diane, we are not clear-cutting this site. We've got thirty-four acres and we're proposing to develop less than sixteen of them, less than fifty percent of this site, and entering upon a conservation restriction to preserve and conserve the remaining nineteen acres. And I think that's very important to note.
Thank you.
In addition, if I may finish, in addition, during that last three weeks, we've submitted a complete package responding to the Planning Department's questions with regard to the battery energy storage system as raised by the Planning Department's memo to the Planning Board. And finally, as was suggested by Mr. Teggera, in addition to our landscape plan and the photo simulations, which we have submitted quite some time ago, at his request, we went forward with line of sight diagrams. I think you heard them earlier described as sight sections and ultimately demonstrated that those lines of sight between the viewpoints chosen by Mr. Teggera and the project have no direct, unobstructed lines of sight. So I, I'd respectfully suggest at this point, Mr. Chairman, and very much different than the previous solar plan be- before me, where the public hearing was closed in December. This project's information hearing was closed in April of two thousand twenty-one, over ten months ago. Our public hearing was closed on December tenth, over a month ago. This project has been reviewed by the town-appointed outside environmental consultant, who with all due respect is a professional environmental consultant who the Conservation Commission or Board has chosen to argue with without any presentation of the qualifications to do so. This project has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. It's been reviewed and approved by the fire department. It's now been reviewed and approved by the Tree Conservation Advisory Commission. And at this point, I'm not aware of any outstanding issues with your planning department. So I would respectfully request of this board that it direct the Planning Department and staff to proceed with the preparation of a decision statement and negative declaration that might be considered at your next meeting on the twenty-eighth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And with all due respect, this isn't anti-development. We, this is, and I say this all the time, but each piece of property that comes in front of us is unique from the next. They're all like fingerprints. They're all different. And you really cannot compare one set of, uh, plans to the next on these properties. And our charge is to make sure that whatever does get developed is done to the best extent possible to all the obvious codes. And we weigh heavily on the environmental concerns. Obviously, it's a very sensitive piece of property. Uh, you have told us many times that the Lockwoods have owned this property for over two hundred years. We've heard you. But with all due respect, we're trying to make sure everything that comes past us is done as best as it can be by this board. With that, does any members of the board care to speak? Planning Board, that is. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, I raised a number of concerns two weeks ago and I, I was hopeful that the Conservation Board, having taken a look at the project, would shed some light on these issues and that the applicant would consider them. And I, I regret to say that I do not believe that the issues that I raised and that the Conservation Board raised have yet been addressed. I just wanna remind the public of some of the history on this case, because it has been before us for a couple of years. Back in April of two thousand and nineteen, we were talking about the tree removal issue and the mitigation. And suggestions were made at that point that there could be onsite mitigation on the other half of the property and also off-site mitigation in, in terms of removing invasives, in terms of planting other trees, which you may have just heard on the previous application we required of the Nantucket Sound project. We discussed the same issue again in November of two thousand twenty, when the applicant talked about, uh, the, you know, the mitigation. The consistent theme here is that the mitigation is always limited to the statutory requirements and nothing further. The board in November of two thousand twenty agreed that merely paying money into the tree fund was insufficient to mitigate for the loss of function of a forest. But the applicant did not respond to that other than to remove components of the original mitigation plan, which were on the table, and limit the application to just the payment of money. There was no other mitigation that was considered, even though it was originally proposed. The issue came up again at our public informational hearing. The issue came up during the summer of this year, of two thousand twenty-one. The issue of forest's function, in my mind, not been satisfactorily addressed and the impacts of that loss are an open question in this application and continue to be so in my mind. And it has nothing to do with the expertise of Barton and Lo Judas. They, if you pose a question to them, they'll certainly answer it. This question may not have been posed to them. They didn't consider it. They didn't mention it except to talk about core forests. We have a core forest. It's already a large forest in this area, as the Conservation Board pointed out. Before I get any further, I do have a question for the town attorney on procedure here. You mentioned last time, Jim, that we had a certain clock running to make a decision. Is that an ultimate decision or is that just a decision point in the secret process that we have to make at this point?
Once you close a public hearing, you have sixty-two days to render a decision. And that's fixed by statute unless the applicant chooses to extend it.
Is that decision an approval or a denial? Is that the decision we need to make within sixty-two days? Or do we need to make a decision on the environmental impact on this?
No, you need to make a decision on the merits of the application.
Thank you. Okay.
I just have one concern. I think that we're asking the applicant to go far beyond the statutes. If he complied with everything, he should be treated just like every other, uh, application. And the second thing I'd like to ask, educate me, where does the money go when you put money into a tree fund? Who has control of it? Who has the right to spend it? I'd like to know those questions. Answers.
The town board has the right to spend the money. And they have to spend it for, uh, things in the tree code, which is other types of mitigation, other tree planting or, um, forest management plans and associated issues, things such of that, things of that nature.
So, so putting a quarter of a million dollars into a system would rectify whatever damage claimed on the, on the forest area? Is that, is that true? Mitigation would, would make it all go away?
Well, certainly the money would be able to be spent towards that end. That's, that's for sure. Thank you.
So should we, then let's set up a decision if we have to do that.
John, if I could, so you, you've heard Aaron's, um, concern. You've heard the concern of the Conservation Board and we've heard Mr. Shanahan. How do you, do you see any path forward to resolve the issues that Aaron and the Conservation Board have?
Well, what I heard, what I just heard Aaron saying, he can add or track from what I've heard, I may have, I hope I don't miss anything. He talked about, um, the off, offered mitigation and said that there has not been enough of it in terms of other plantings on the other piece of, of this property, invasive removals, et cetera, et cetera. So you could find a path to add that type of mitigation on that part of the property or find another property in which to do that mitigation? I happen to think that the mitigation package then would reduce the amount of money that they would put in. I happen to think that is the case. And I think the other thing that Aaron spoke about, and these are, I think, the big, big ones. He may have made another couple of points, but I don't have them at hand, is the for, the function of the forest. I haven't heard much about the function of the forest either, to be honest with you. I've heard it talked about, but I haven't heard any evaluation ever about the function of the forest. And I don't mean that relative to this application only. I've heard discussion and, uh, references to the function of the forest, but I haven't seen any evaluation of the function of the forest such that you might see when we are looking at functional values of wetlands. You can talk about them, you know, they soak up rainwater. They certainly do. One of the things that we have on our code is in, in, is the stormwater, um, code which requires that the runoff post, uh, pre and post-construction is not changed. And that is a mitigating measure that you must take when you are developing vacant land. So when you take down the trees, you do change the stormwater runoff situation. But the stormwater measures that you have to build are done in a manner that does not change how the runoff behaves on the site. So, you know, we have other things that have been developed many, many years ago that speak to some of those issues. As far as the habitat, the habitat will change some. But I can tell you that when I participated, for instance, in the biodiversity study that was done for the town, much of the discussion was about fragmentation. So when you look at a subdivision, while it may be true that there are varied landscapes and habitats in it, it fragments a natural habitat that you would find possibly existing on particular forested sites. In this case, rather than have a subdivision, you're going to have a property that, as Mr. Shanahan has indicated, less than fifty percent of it will be removed, which leaves more than fifty percent of that same type of habitat. It leaves more than fifty percent to be available to maintain any wildlife corridor that, that may be there. And I believe, as we've seen in the other solar projects, the fencing and so forth will allow certain animals that use it that are of a certain size, which are probably the major habitat users, to go under the fence and utilize the same piece of property, albeit it won't be forested. It would be more meadow-like, as we've seen. So again, as far as those functions, I don't know that I've seen any science about it. I don't know that. And I'm not, again, I'm not speaking particularly to this project. I'm speaking that we have not developed or have we seen any hard evidence of what a functional evaluation of forests might include. And some of the things that get talked about, as I've just said, are already, uh, in many instances, being dealt with in other parts of our code or in particular applications when you have areas of the same site that are being maintained in a natural state. I think those are, those are the two things major that Aaron had talked about. Um, and that's... some of the things that I have thought about them in those regards. Another, another option that you have open is to reengage B and L for some of the questions that you have.
Diane, do you want to comment on that?
Sorry. Yes, I think that we should engage B and L on some of the issues that we've, we've brought up. And also what John was talking about, particularly about the function of the forest. I think that's something that is not written up at all in their, in their report. And, you know, I also just want to remind everybody that, you know, the Advisory Committee on Open Space in two thousand and six and also in two thousand and twenty-two rated this parcel. You know, high due to, due to the feeling of the open space, the biodiversity, the wetlands, the physical features. And it was one of four that was recommended to be purchased by the town for preservation. So, you know, that's, that's another option to consider here. Not that, you know.
Yes, I think judging that the property has been in the family for, at this point, over two hundred years. I'm not sure that they're interested in selling it. Jim, if I could.
Could be sections. Could, could you get sections of it?
Mr. Chairman, one and if
Hang on one second, Ms. Shannon. I apologize. Jim?
Yes.
So the clock is ticking. What are we, thirty days into it at this point?
When do we close the public hearing? Looks like we close the January tenth. So, yeah, we're about thirty-five days in.
So the path forward, obviously, we've heard from Aaron Bach and Diane Dreyer with the Conservation Board. And John has laid out what, you know, his thoughts are. Basically, we have thirty-two days to go before, I guess, a legal action could be taken. You got any guidance on?
Well, let's, you know, that, that sixty-two days can be amended by agreement between the applicant and the board.
Right. That's the first thing. The second, it's, it leaves you, I believe, twenty-seven days left. If my math is correct.
Twenty-seven days?
Yeah.
So twenty-seven days. John, if, if you had followed your thought process, we'd get the consultant to answer the bullet point questions that Aaron and Diane have asked.
I can speak to them about it now. In terms of function of the forest, I, I don't know what they'll be able to say on that. That may take longer. I don't know that there's particular evaluations out there that actually reduce that to empirical data. I'm not sure of that. I think that's what we are talking about. But in terms of all the other questions, I think they can answer some of them. In short order.
Can I make a suggestion here? My main concern was that this issue wasn't addressed, okay? I'm not trying to prejudge it as much as I'm trying to raise it as something that makes a complete record. I said this two weeks ago. If we got an extra thirty days from the applicant to, to finish this, that would take some of the time pressure off us, but it also would, in my mind, complete the record. As I've said any number of times, one of the things I wanted, if we do make a decision, I do want the decision to stand and, and not not be subject to, to attack because of incompleteness or arbitrariness or anything that normally triggers an Article seventy-eight proceeding. So I'm wondering if the, if we could get an extra month, get this issue under, under our belts, come to grips with it, and then we'll finish the project, make it, you know, then we'll be at a decision point.
Jim?
I would agree that would be the best solution. I think it's in everyone's interest, including the applicants, that this issue be addressed. Giving the applicant an approval that's subject to challenge on the grounds that an issue wasn't adequately addressed is not doing the applicant any favors.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan?
Yeah, a couple of points, Mr. Chairman. First, I, I just want to go back to Diane's comments about the recommendation that this was among the four sites that the town ought to buy. And yet the town has not ever made an effort to purchase this property. With all due respect, I don't think the planning board process should be used to keep this land as open space because the town has chosen not to do so. I think that's very unfair to the Lockwoods. Second of all, you made a very strong point at the conclusion of the last session on January twenty-fourth. That this project wasn't being treated any differently than any other project. And I contested that assertion then. And I want to point out what is going on this evening is further evidence that we are being treated differently. The town went out and hired an environmental consultant to review this project. The town told the environmental consultant what it wanted, reviewed and reported. And the environmental consultant came back and found this project satisfactory. Now, I know there are people in the town, on the Conservation Board, perhaps on the Planning Board, that hoped beyond hope that that B and L report, we'd come back and kill this project, but it didn't. So now we're going to look at other subjects and we're going to go back out to B and L. And my question to the board is, how many different times are we going to go back till you get the answer you want, so you don't have to vote to approve this project?
That's a poor statement on your part, Mr. Shanahan, because I told you several times when I referred to the record on this case. This issue came up many times already and just hasn't been addressed.
Yeah, but with all due respect, Mr. Bach, and, and no one has argued differently with me, and, and I've heard you. But your tree ordinance was put into effect to address the matters that you are now raising. Your town, your, if I may, your tree ordinance quantified what you do on the basis of number of trees removed and protected land or woodland disturbed. And that addresses the matters that you're concerned about. That is to address the loss of those trees and its effect. So I, I just want to put that on the record. I, I think this is unprecedented. I know where your counsel is. I know where your counsel is coming from. Let me finish. And I'm not going to say no to your counsel. I cannot say yes to the board this evening, but I certainly will be back in short order. This is not my decision to be made in my corporate organization. But I've been doing this work for thirty-two years, Mr. Bach. You've been doing it equally long. You know how this is going to come out, but I can't make that commitment tonight.
I just, I just want to respond to you by saying, we were told at least two years ago by our attorney that the treatment ordinance does not limit the scope of our review. That's all.
Okay. If I could just say, everybody's going to have a different opinion, right? Everybody's got their own opinion. I'm going to tell you from my end. No one's praying that any report comes back killing a project. We want to make sure that we cross the Ts and dot the Is. And I think this board has been very clear about that with every project we handle going forward. So, Mr. Shanahan, we look forward to getting a response, one way or another. We'll have town council advise us at that point. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for yours.
Thank you. I appreciate the time the, the Conservation Board took to come out and explain the situation on their end or from them front. And we'll move forward. Ms. Shannon, thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next solar project, which is Kichwan Solar. Okay, this is for a discussion of site plan and special permit, location seven one six, Kichwan Road. Hi, Julia.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Don't worry today.
I'm doing well. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Great. So I did have a couple of updates to share with the board. Before I do that, though, given the comments that were just made about the previous application, I did want to point out, it has been more than sixty-two days since our public hearing was closed for this project. I was not aware that that was a requirement, but I thought maybe we should start the discussion there. Our public hearing was closed on November eighth.
I think, you know, you're still working with us.
Yes, I, I just want to point out, if that is, you know, something that was missed, I want to make sure that we're addressing that now.
Oh, why don't you write a letter to the board expressing your concern on that, Nick? We can answer it directly.
Okay. Sure. All right. Then I
Can we just, can we just assume that your continued participation on whatever it is that we're going to deal with is, is tattered out to a consent to adjourning that deadline?
Sure, but I don't think we would want to agree to that being adjourned indefinitely.
I, I agree with that.
Right. Okay, so maybe we can just put that in writing of, of when we would like to have, you know, all reached a decision. Maybe Ikiji can request that we do that within a certain timeframe?
Yeah, that, that's something we definitely got to follow up on.
Okay. All right. Sure. All right, we'll put that in writing. Okay, in that case, let me see if I'm able to share my screen here. Not sure it's letting me. No, here we go, okay. It is not letting me share my screen. It seems that it's my Zoom that is having an issue. But I believe all the materials were in the meeting packet, so maybe I'll just speak through these rather than sharing my screen, if that's all right.
Yeah, I think we have everything. Or Rob, if you have something in particular, maybe Robin will share it.
All right, sure. Yeah, if there's anything in particular that you want to focus on, maybe Robin can pull it up, but in the meantime, I'll just get started. So, yeah, wanted to just provide an update, since we have not been before this board for a while. So we've submitted a number of updated drawings since the last time we were before you. The first of which is an updated site plan. There are a few changes to that site plan. We were asked by Con Edison to move the utility poles closer to Kichwan Road. So we've done so. We also were told by the Department of Transportation that we could not have an access road off of Kichwan Road. So we have since connected that access road to the existing driveway. And finally, we have updated our landscaping plans to go along with that. We also had to increase slightly the spacing between the solar arrays and the surrounding fence. We've done that where possible and have made all of those changes in a way to minimize the impacts to the overall site plan and just, you know, stay in keeping with what we've shown so far. As I mentioned, we also provided an updated landscaping plan. This was developed in response to comments that we received in a discussion we had with Mr. Tegater back in January regarding the site sections that we provided. So we provided site sections for three different view sheds from Kichwan Road, as if you were in a car driving past or standing on Kichwan Road. And then we provided view sheds from both of the nearest neighbors on the western side of the property. Based on that conversation with Mr. Tegater, the conclusion was that from Kichwan Road, the change in topography, there's an existing berm there, as well as the existing proposed trees, are sufficient to block the solar panels from view. However, in the previous landscaping plan, it was decided that we did not have enough screening along the west side of the solar arrays. So in this latest landscaping plan, we have moved the proposed plantings to the west side of the access road. And we've also added plantings that will reach the desired height. So all along that access road, we have a mix of white pine and green giant arboridie. They'll be planted at heights between ten and fourteen feet. And then, given the expected growth rate by around year five, we expect that entire row of trees to be anywhere between twenty-two and twenty-nine feet tall. And if I recall correctly, what Mr. Tegater had said, had, the request had been between twenty-five and thirty feet tall by year five. So that's what we're trying to meet with that new landscaping plan. We've also submitted a stormwater memo, which was developed by our stormwater engineer. I did have a conversation with Dan Sierra earlier today regarding that memo. He is asking us to provide a more in-depth SWIP plan for his review. But just looking at that memo, with the addition of the solar, the access road and the tree removal, we're expecting the peak flow rate to increase by about two percent. In that memo, we've proposed a stormwater basin, which would actually decrease overall peak flow rates on the site by three percent as compared to existing conditions. This is a quite complex site to deal with, because the watershed actually encompasses neighboring properties. They're already dealing with some stormwater issues from neighbors, so really doing our best to improve the conditions there. But I do realize Dan has asked for a more in-depth SWIP. I'm hoping to work with him on that. Finally, I want to just note, we received a memorandum from the Tree Conservation Advisory Commission ahead of this meeting. They made a few statements, which I believe we have actually already addressed, so I just wanted to address those for them and for the benefit of this board, if you've seen that memorandum. They stated that we did not provide a mitigation plan. We have, in fact, outlined our mitigation plan in a memorandum that we presented on November eighth. The mitigation plan includes planting trees per landscaping plans, as well as making a payment of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars into the Tree Bank Fund, which is a hundred dollars per tree. They also stated that we did not provide a tree removal plan. I did just want to note, the majority of tree removal is taking place in that area south of the arrays. The reason we have not provided a plan for that is because all of the trees in those areas are going to be removed. And there are so many that showing them on a plan is just not feasible. They have all been tagged on site, however. So if one were to take our tree inventory and walk around the site, you would be able to identify all of those trees. So it's not perhaps the plan they were looking for, but it is the clearest way to demonstrate them. They also made a note that we did not provide a mitigation ratio or the diameter at breast height of the proposed plantings. Per our mitigation plan, we're not proposing a one-to-one replacement of any trees or a mitigation ratio. We're not saying that our landscaping plan is meeting a mitigation ratio, which is why we have offered to pay for all those trees being removed, to pay into the Tree Bank Fund. So I'm not sure if it's really necessary to provide that diameter breast height for that calculation, if we're not claiming that that is required. They also had missed that we did offer to provide that payment into the Tree Bank Fund, which I've already mentioned. And they did single out a couple of the trees that were chosen and a few of the shrubs, which I'm happy to explain, you know, to the Tree Commission why those were chosen. The particular issue here is they're taking issue with the green giant arboridie that we did choose to provide screening along the west side. I'd actually raised this with Mr. Tegater when I spoke to him, that I anticipated that being an issue because we do have to consider the trade-off between the screening that we're looking for along the west side and what trees are going to provide that screening. So they did take an issue with that, stating it may be a monoculture. We provided those because those are the best trees to provide screening in those conditions. And finally, speaking with Robin last week, she did request that we complete the MS four application. That will be submitted by Wednesday of this week. We will make sure that we get that in. And I do, you know, just want to express to the board that I believe Ikiji has been working in good faith to move this project forward. One of the important items that is sort of hanging over us at the moment is that we do require the negative declaration from this board in order to move the project forward with the New York City DEP. And our biggest concern at the moment is we do have a very strict deadline in place that is imposed by New York State. The more weeks that this is being delayed, the more we are concerned that we'll be delayed with the DEP process and then we'll be putting the entire project in jeopardy. So I just want to express that concern that we have to the board and see if there's anything we can do to address that and get to a resolution maybe a bit quicker than we have been moving so far. And I believe those are all of my updates for this evening. I apologize for not being able to share my screen. But if you did want me to dive into any of those more in detail, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, I think Robin has shared the landscape plan with us here.
Perfect. Thank you, Robin.
Did you prepare a, did you prepare a written memo back to the Tree Commission outlining all the things that you recited? Did you prepare a, did you prepare a written memo back to the, uh, tree commission outlining all the things that you recited?
Uh, I have not. I have it in draft form. We only received their comments on Friday afternoon, so I haven't been able to formally send that into them, but yes, I will.
I mean, I think that's significant in terms of our doing a negative declaration for you is to get that kind of tied up.
Okay, absolutely.
Anything else from the board at this time? Dan, you got anything you want to talk about, Tom? John, anything on your end? Jim?
Nothing on my end.
Dan, you're back. Anything on your end?
Um, yeah, I mean, and procedurally, I guess the other thing is that, um, I spoke to Julie about this earlier, that what we need to do is to have a, a complete SWIP. And, and that will enable the board to, to do the neck deck that she needs to go to the DEP. Um, but it appears they'll be under the threshold for DEP approval. Um, so the, you know, in terms of disturbance, so, you know, some of our applications, that's really, uh, provided quite a delay in, in the project. Um, so for, for this board to do the neck deck, we need to, to do the, uh, the SWIP that we can approve and, and get them coverage under the stormwater general permit, which they'll need, um, to begin construction, but as I said, it, it would be, uh, necessary to, uh, establish what the stormwater mitigation is so that this board can, uh, adopt a negative declaration.
Thank you, Dan. Diane or any members of the conservation board, any, uh, comments, concerns?
Um, no, I mean, we just want to point out that, you know, this is one of the sites that, this is the type of site that we would be, appreciate having the solar fields at as opposed to forested area.
Understood. Thank you. Aaron, Bill, anything on our end?
Oh, no, I think we get all these things wrapped up, we can go.
All right, so Julia, you got to get that letter to, to Robin and, uh, keep working with Dan and we'll move forward.
Okay, so I, uh, have some notes, um, going to, uh, address that it's been more than sixty-two days. We'll send a response to the Tree Conservation Advisory Commission, uh, and work with Dan to complete the SWIP. Uh, I believe those are the outstanding items that were mentioned.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. We appreciate it.
You have a great night.
I have a question to the-
All right, Bill, go ahead.
Okay, if we don't make a decision in sixty-whatever days, does the, uh, applicant automatically become, uh, I mean, automatically have a right? If we don't, if we don't make a decision in sixty days, what happens? The applicant is approved?
It's not, yes, the, it, the law provides that the, uh, application is deemed approved if it's not acted on within sixty-two days of the close of a public hearing. However, there are a lot of extraneous issues that would prevent the applicant from going forward here, such as the, uh, the lack of a SWAP approval by DEP and the negative declaration they need from the planning board. Uh, would not be deemed having been issued. So because there are environmental impacts, I don't think the applicant would be, uh, able to proceed with their project just yet.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, Diane, or Julia, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a town board referral. This is a request for the town to abandon a portion of a map street. We have Michael Grace on.
Yes, how you doing?
Excuse me, Mike. One, one, just one point, I think I wanted to first of all, thank the conservation board for joining us tonight. And just like Dan Sierra has been joining us on a regular basis, it's very beneficial to be able to have direct discussion with the conservation board on these topics. And, and I would hope you would join us in future meetings, but thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah, we really do appreciate it and it was a great help.
Thank you. Anytime you need us, just let us know.
Thank you, Diane.
Sorry, Mike.
Uh, okay.
Hey, so what do you got, Mike? You gonna share screen?
Um, no, I'm not. Um, e- essentially, I'll try to explain it to you. It's pretty straightforward. Um, this, uh, the piece of property that's an issue is the terminus of Summit Street. Um, uh, where, oh, thank you. Is that Robin? Who's doing that? So nice.
It's magic.
Hey, I love it. All right, so if you're, if you're looking, you, you, if you're looking at the picture, you see there's a line of cars. It look, almost look red, white and blue. Is it driveway? Yeah, you got it right there. So that actually is the, the, uh, mapped roadbed for Summit Street, uh, on the Depot Plaza subdivision that was filed probably in the thirties. And that was never taken over by the town as a public right-of-way. And, um, so ostensibly and legally, uh, the budding property owners have titled to the midpoint of that paper road until such time as the town would accept it, uh, the offer of dedication for road purposes. Uh, I represent, and Blackman, who is one of the budding property owners, who is looking to make some improvements to his property that would incorporate that portion of property, which is pretty, pretty much is owned by him. Uh, uh, but by deed from the developer, uh, under the clause of, uh, giving that budding property owner, um, rights to the midline of the budding roadway. The town has a, uh, this, uh, right to, um, at some point exercise its option to make it a town road. And what we're looking to do is, because an investment is going to be made in the property, we want to do that without having, uh, this, uh, cloud hanging over that road strip that being the town's ability to take it as a town road. The, uh, terminus of Summit Street ends, uh, up against what is a backyard property that affronts on California Road. And I don't think the town has any, uh, uh, desire whatsoever to, um, maintain, uh, its right, uh, to, uh, option to make it a town road. And so, uh, we would like to, my client would like to make an offer, both property owners make an offer to, uh, assume that, that, that town road bed, uh, into their properties without the, uh, residual right of the town to opt to make it a, a town road. So understanding it, they own it by deed. If you did a title search, the town wouldn't own anything. Only right the town has, uh, over that portion of the roadway, it has the right to accept the offer of dedication, which is made de facto by filing the original subdivision map. So we just want them to relinquish that option in the future.
Okay.
That's essentially-
Straightforward. John, any thoughts?
Um, well, you can see down at the bottom of the map here that, uh, this backs up against people's backyards. Uh, they live on California Road. So what has happened here, um, with all of these road spurs that were originally planned to connect to other parts of the developed portions of the town of Yorktown, those portions have developed in a different manner after many, many years. Uh, different trends in terms of subdivision design, residential development, et cetera, et cetera. So this road spur, this right-of-way, uh, I don't think the town has any legitimate reason to look or to save, uh, in terms of having the ability to, uh, connect roads in terms of the future growth of the town of Yorktown. That is pretty much, um, foreclosed by other developments that have been developed in a different way and a different manner than this subdivision was first laid out. At there, you can see those, uh, one, two, I think, three rights-of-way, or at least two, that bang up against the California Road subdivision. So there's no, no opportunity for connection from there. So I don't think that there's any reason to hang on to it.
Okay.
Practical reason.
Yeah.
In terms of process, I think it's your baby.
Okay.
Uh, that you guys do these, um, subdivision maps. You have been given the authority over laying out roads and abandoning them. You have authority under town law to go and amend any map that's been filed already in, in the county that is partially developed or fully developed and amend them. So for instance, I think you have the authority to take this map and all three of those or two of those, you can demap them by, by resolution and have a map filed in the county. That, that's your authority. So I think asking for one, I think is still your authority.
We should- I, I would just add that, I, and I, John, you're a hundred percent right. You know, for our purposes, the simplest thing to do is just have the town, you know, give a good claim deed, uh, uh, over, uh, to the, uh, budding property owners of whatever right, title and interest they have in there, which is right now, there's no, no title. And the only interest is being to accept an offer of dedication. And, uh, which was done, uh, by de facto by having filed the original map. I don't know that necessarily you have to go in it and amend the map, but it's just basically, uh, the town just can quitclaim its rights and that would, that would probably take care of it. So as long as the planning board has no issue with it. And the highway superintendent, I think Dave Pagnelli expressed that he certainly doesn't have any interest in it.
No, I think, uh, uh, from a DPW perspective, these things are, are headaches.
Right.
A lot of times you get called, you know, come remove a tree. It's on your, your road on the map. Well, it's not.
Right, I, I told David, if you, the town attorney expressed a desire to have a public hearing on it. I said, I don't think it's necessary, but it may, it may elucidate a lot of people on the, you may get a lot of, a lot of people coming in and get, get, and then get rid of these, uh, or take over these, uh, dead spurs, which don't serve any purpose whatsoever. And this area up here is notorious for it. You've done it in the past, but, uh, you, you, you're not selling us anything because you don't own any. You don't have, your only, only interest you have is to exercise the option to make it a town road. So you don't technically own it. And, and I don't think you have to, and, John, uh, uh, demapping it would be fine, but I don't think you have to do even that.
Yeah, if I just could clarify, Mr. Chairman, the town board does have to adopt a resolution amending the town's official map to, uh, eliminate this as a street on the town's official map. So no one buying property that abuts a street could make a claim that they thought there was a right to a street there. I don't know that that would ever happen, but that's the process that has to be followed. But otherwise, I agree with everything John said.
Yeah, but, but I think before that, the planning board needs to remove the possibility in terms of the planning documents that have been filed in the county.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with that.
So I, I guess we just need to talk about exactly what needs to happen to affect that. I'm not sure. I, maybe it's a quick claim, but I don't, I, that I don't know. Uh, I've heard, I've heard a quick claim doesn't do everything that you need to do in this, in this.
I think Michael said it correctly, that all they need to do is adopt a resolution revoking any implied offer of dedication. That's enough to clear title to him.
Right.
That resolution can be certified by the town clerk and given to the property owners and it becomes part of their title, if you will.
Yeah, and-
And, and who does that?
Uh, the town board would adopt that resolution. And then the planning board, um, they would also amend the official map.
The, the town board would, but what I'm saying, what, what I'm saying, Jim, is that the town board, I don't think can do that without the planning board making this statement, whether it's by resolution, by map, whatever, that those rights of ways are no longer needed for the orderly development of the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think if you do, do that by resolution, the thing is, it, it, you know, the, the bottom line i- is that for these types of old subdivisions where they're mapped, there actually has to be some town board action to accept the offer of dedication.
Oh, of course, yeah, no, I understand that.
If, if they, if they, if they just, you know, relinquish that right, we're, we're pretty much done. Um, the, 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 as far as, uh, that automatically just keep the, 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 the owner, the budding owner, then would be wise to just take an action to quiet title, you know?
I, I think we could, if the town board's ability to do this is derivative of, of, of the planning board function, why don't we set the stage, take a resolution abandoning these three strips? And then, uh, we're done.
I agree.
Sounds like a plan. All right, so John, you can get that going?
Yep, with, uh, Jim and Mike's help.
Yeah.
Make sure that we're, we're not making any missteps, that's all.
No, we'll get it done. If anything, we'll all be overstepping. But we'll, we'll get it done.
That's good. That's good.
I appreciate that. Guys, I'm, I'm on the next one too, so I don't know, uh, the, uh, the zoning board referral. It, it doesn't show me as a contact, but I-
No, it says Signs Inc. All right, so next we have the, uh, again, the ZBA. Lowe's Pad A, Post Trader Joe's signage. Location three, two, four, zero, Prom Pound Road.
Yeah, this is actually an application for, um, Pad B. I don't know where the mistranslation came in, but it's for the, uh, this, uh, pizza, sliced pizza?
No, no, it's not.
No?
We didn't get sliced pizza. We only have Trader Joe's and we got Taco Bell from them.
All right, well, then, then I guess you're going to get another one then. Then maybe I'm the-
Is there anybody from Signs Inc. here?
And Rob, this, not, this is not, uh, uh, sliced pizza between the triple A and Starbucks?
No, we have plans for, uh, the Trader Joe's building.
All right, all right, so I guess we're, we're, we're co-tailing each other then. All right, because I, I'm representing sliced pizza, so I guess you'll get that next time around.
All right, so-
It should be a ZBA referral as well, so I, I don't know. I'll have to find out what happens. Let's, let's do a miscommunication.
Anything we, we can do with Taco Bell? I mean, with, uh, Trader Joe's?
Yeah.
Is it, is it, the applicant's not here?
Well, it's for the signs going around three sides of the building.
It's a zoning board, Matt, isn't it?
Right, and you have a master sign plan there.
You guys did a master sign plan on this. And the r- resolution here specifically required them to come back when they had their signs worked out.
Okay.
On this building.
I guess we'll table it then.
Well, do you want me to send a memo to the zoning board?
I do see-
Uh, they don't meet till the end of the month.
Okay, so you want to see them back again?
Would we have an objection for them putting three signs up around the building?
I don't have any issues with what I was-
I wouldn't have any objection.
Do you want to bring them back at the next meeting with the sign company? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think they're saying Aaron and Bill don't see the need. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
If they can come back before the zoning board meets, that's fine, but I don't, I don't see the need to do. I didn't see anything jumped out at me on this and neither Bill did.
That's pretty, pretty straightforward looking sign.
Okay. Robin, there's nothing that runs afoul of the master sign plan, right? You don't think?
No, we didn't, um, we had put a square footage on this building, but it was a different building.
Okay.
I think, so- I think, so they, we were telling them to come back, and they're all, um, channel letter signs.
Okay, so, um, you want us to write a memo in favor without objection?
Yeah.
Can I, can I point out one other thing?
By all means.
The awning that is supposed to be fronting on Route two oh two has only been partially installed. Uh, I've never known that to be done unless they were only planning to partially install it. Uh, given the importance of that facade, we've already made notice that, that the awning needs to be done correctly because it's important what, how things look from, you know, the twenty thousand people that go by it every day. Uh, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. I don't know if you want me to say anything in the memo about it, but.
I think you maybe just make the point that we're waiting for it to be installed appropriately or correctly as per plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I would make a reference to it.
Alright.
I agree.
Okay. Alright, we got another Z B A. This is, in fact, a Taco Belt on Crom Pound Road signage, and I guess we don't have anybody here from Signs Inc. Um, this is requested variance for a forty seven point seven square foot sign where forty square foot is allowed. A variance for thirty four point seven square feet where proposed sign does not front on Crom Pound Road. East elevation and a variance of eight point five square feet sign where the proposed sign does not front on Crom Pound Road South elevation. The freestanding side is included in the package, however, no variance is required. Aaron, Bill, any issues?
I, I don't see any issues, but why isn't, uh, Signs Inc. he's the one that brought it up? I'm sure.
Well.
The, the only issue you have is with the freestanding sign. Which, you didn't do a master sign plan on this, obviously. Uh, well, you may have an issue. Uh, the single pole signs, we've been discouraging for many, many years. So we always like to see, in first order, a monument sign, usually, usually much lower. Uh, on Route two oh two, they have gone to the sixteen foot maximum quite often. But we typically like to see double pole signs at the very least, because they just look better than the spindly, single pole sign. That's up to you guys, if you want me to add that in.
Why, why can't we add that in and, and, and use that as the, uh, as a, you know, a lever?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can recommend that if you guys agree with it.
Why not? It's the easy way out, and it looks good.
Okay, that was easy.
Okay.
And if the house is not John, no?
No, I mean, you know, our memo will reflect that as well.
Okay, thank you. And next we have a town board referral on our favorite topic, solar. Uh, these are proposed amendments to the solar law. John, are you gonna speak to this?
Uh, these are some modifications that the town board has been looking at. Um, I think in large measure because of feedback that they've been hearing from the public. Although we haven't had a lot of solar farms be, be constructed yet or even approved, we've only had a couple. Some of these things continue to happen, so the town board, I think, wanted to tighten up some of the regulations. So they have extended the setback from fifty foot to one hundred feet. They've changed the minimum lot size for ground mount in, uh, you know, for small ground mount, in other words, what you would find on a residential piece, not something like foothill or strawberry or hill. In other words, a small piece of property that somebody has, uh, their house on already. Um, and they wanna do that to prevent, you know, your neighbor from having to look at ground mount all day long. Uh, and I think the other, there's a couple more, but the significant one, um, it's escaping me, in fact, right now.
They're, they're making a, uh, decommissioning bond mandatory.
Yeah, the decommissioning bond is mandatory, which I think is, is fine. Oh, the, the other one that I think, uh,
Fine.
is significant is that there has to be yearly inspections of the landscaping, so that the, the screening never, you know, is left unattended and becomes ineffective. So if there's some dead plants there, every year, they gotta make sure that they're living, they're viable, and they're doing the job that they're doing, report to the town, and if it's not, they have to replace it to make sure that the screening remains effective. So. The only other thing I would add is that I think that, I happen to think that the current ones that are in the hopper should not be subject to some of this. Um, in particular, it's the setback, for instance. Um, because, you know, that would be a wholesale redesign of things and.
I agree.
You know.
That would put a real burden on everybody.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do that, John, we would need specific language put into the law that it would not affect application filed as of this date.
Right, so if the board agrees, that would be a suggestion that that l- language is created and added to the law.
Did the, the town board consider that question and make a deliberate decision to exclude a grandfather provision, or did they say, or it was not, did that not come up?
That came up not with the entire board, it came up among one or two board members, uh, and the town attorney, myself, I think, maybe the town engineer was in the room at the time. Those folks seem to agree with it.
So with, uh, Aaron, Bill, with what we see in front of us, do we have any issues with the proposed changes? Outside of the current applications that are in front of us?
Well, make sure, that law has to make sure we, we protect the, uh, the homeowner. You know, a house owner doesn't wanna see his neighbor, like you said before. I don't know, we could say maybe two acres, four acres, I don't know what's going on with, I don't know the laws of the law. What, what's, what do they say?
It's two to five, right?
Two to five acres?
It was two, it's going to be five.
Oh, I, I would agree with that.
I would agree, I agree with the proposed changes. I would endorse them. Is there anything else that we wanna bring up to the town board's attention while they're doing this? This didn't go to public hearing yet, did it, John?
No.
It's just on a referral.
February twenty second.
Just on a referral.
Okay.
At this point.
It, it says February twenty second.
Aaron, you, you thinking of something?
We should endorse it, Rich, and, and endorse a, uh, an exclusion for projects that are, you know, already filed.
Well, if I could add something, um, Mr. LaScala had a particularly difficult time with one of the proposed, um, projects. Uh, I forget which one it was, but it was essentially a strip mall that took every available piece of land and tried to put some ground mounted panels on it. And he essentially repeated visual pollution until they walked away. Maybe if that is something that planning board doesn't wanna see again, that should be brought up, something in a high visibility or a historic, uh, location.
Great point.
That was the Shrub Oak property.
Yeah.
Right, that was the one, yeah.
Yeah.
J V Bagel, too. That was a, that, that application was very intense. No, I, I, I agree, that was right on the road, uh, you know. In fact, the adjacent road was at the same level due to the grades as these panels.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was, and it was, it is a historically, uh, populated area with structures, so I, I, I think, yeah, if, if, if this is something we could, you know, craft to address that, John?
Do we take out, maybe they, we recommend that they limit ground mounted, you know, to get it out of a C two zone, you know, the neighborhood commercial.
Or prohibited from being in the front yard or in the front of buildings.
Yeah.
Well, uh, you, but you can't, because there's a lot of talk about canopy over parking lots, and that's in the front yard often.
That's true.
Yeah, so.
It's appropriate. One of the issues, I think, that prompted this was there was somebody who did this in a residential neighborhood in a rear yard, and all the neighbors could see it. So I think that's, that's what I think prompted the minimum area requirement.
Yeah, that it's particular to smaller, smaller pieces of property that have homes on it. But, but the discussion about the commercial areas, you know, y- y- you always have to be careful about what you write, because it has kind of sometimes a snowball effect or a domino effect to things that you didn't anticipate. So for instance, you know, if you're going to write something that you have to adhere to, and you, you end up with all of these, uh, canopy projects and commercial zones, which many people want, rather than other pro- properties, you, you know, have foreclosed another opportunity sometimes. Whereas the subjectivity part of your review, I appear to work quite well with the small shopping center. You know, you guys asked them to move it around, you immediately were skeptical of the, of the canopy and the front parking lot on that one. They did move them around, and they never really were able to satisfy, uh, some of the visual pollution issues, and so therefore, I mean, I think, I think your reticence led the applicant to understand that this was just a battle that they probably could not win. Sometimes in that way, it, it works just as well as having a, a missive in the law.
So you, you think we have sufficient tools to deal with that kind of question if it came up again? Without, you can make a blanket.
Yeah, because in the law, yeah, in the law, it says that, uh, in, in the commercial zones, in the, in the residential zones, you have to screen.
Who sends me an email?
In the, in the commercial zones, you have to, you have to screen or buffer or modify the vis- the visual impact to your, to your satisfaction. And I think that, that's what happened there. So in other words, it, it says to your satisfaction, and it's a little bit, uh, less strict, because in the, in the case of a parking lot, you could have a host of parking lots that have all different, you know, projects that may come to them and just are different in their very nature about how they, uh, you know, impact visually the neighborhood that they're in. And that has to do with size, has to do with proximity to the street, has to do with scope of the project, you know, all of those subjective factors, I think, come into. That's just my sense.
Well, it sounds reasonable, maybe then I wouldn't, I wouldn't act for those conditions, what do you think?
I think we leave all enough alone then.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so we write a letter in support and ask for the waiver of, of projects that are currently out there in the works.
Okay.
We missing anything?
Rich, you're not, you're not gonna be here in two weeks?
No, if you could please, yeah, I'm gonna be down in, uh, North Carolina watching Adelphi softball.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, we missing anything? We good? Alright, do I have a motion to close the meeting, please?
Motion to close.
Second? I object. All's in favor, aye, there much all.
Objection overruled.
Okay, go.
Good night.